Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and District. Commissioner John, would you lead us in a prayer and prayers, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you today for this day you've given to us. May I ask that you would be with us today as we consider and make decisions? Father, we ask that you would give us discretion, understanding, and wisdom today that we don't have, but we need. We're looking to you for those answers today. Father, be with all of us here in Franklin County. Keep your hands upon us. Thank you, Lord, for keeping us from the storms that we've talked in the past. Every storm that might be in our future, Jesus.
Amen.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parrish. Discussion on all the favor, all the poll, that pass unanimous. Next on the agenda will be payment of the county bills.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner John. Discussion on all the favor, all the polls, that pass unanimous. I'm gonna go with them all, go away from the agenda for a minute and bring up the school board members.
The chairman, Mr. Stacy Curvin's here.
Mr. Chairman Stacy, would you come up, please, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I have, the school board has made a request for the county to support a, another, another Triumph application, and it's on item number six in my report. Board action to write a letter of support for Franklin County's school systems pre-application to Triumph for a grant they are seeking to implement a program on unmanned flights or drones. According to the school board, this industry is growing exponentially each day with drones currently being used by military, forestry, search and rescue, real estate, and many other occupations. The total project cost for five years is 1.8 million dollars, and the school board is seeking a grant from Triumph for 1.215 million. These figures include all expenses to run, set up, and maintain the program and equipment for five years, after which the income from certifications earned should make the program sustainable. Students will be earning a CTE certification as a small USUAS Safe and Visual Line of Sight System Operator. Both of these certifications open up opportunities for immediate employment for our students in a field with earning potentials much greater than those normally available to them. I have been in contact with Triumph staff, and Triumph also believes that drone industry is an opportunity for students in our surrounding counties, so I believe Triumph will favor upon the school board's request. The board action supports their request for 1.25, 215 million out of Triumph.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, seconded by Commissioner John. Discussion. Yeah, one question.
Yes, sir.
What does CTE mean?
I will, hopefully the chairman will know that.
CTE?
So it says here, soon as we earning CTE certificate.
Those are vocational programs.
Okay.
Vocational, vocational type certification.
Okay.
I will say, just as a sort of validation of what the chairman said, or what they've given us here, so the drone industry is something that is available with training in a high school setting that will then put you into a mode where you can make a living coming out of high school and don't need further training. So it's a great opportunity. We'll just see, I will be honest, Mr. Chairman, Stacy Curvin, that we had a drone operator that we were looking at relocating here, and when Tyndall gets back up and running, I hope that we still are in that business. Because Tyndall is going to be a great asset for all of us who see drone activity as an industry, but Tyndall's gotta get back up and running right now.
It's the way of the future.
It's the way of the future.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, go ahead.
Just had a thought. It just seems so basic, but I'd like to consider if there's any way of developing specifically training on how to study in these monies, the fundamentals of that.
Right.
I think it would really complement the outcomes that you're looking for. Do you have that flexibility in this money?
Well, as far as teaching kids how to study in every class, I mean, that's the responsibility of every single teacher that teaches their class.
Agreed.
And that starts in kindergarten, preschool, and all the way through. I think I've heard you mention this before.
I have.
It's something else that's familiar to me. I think we talked about it at a school function, but I agree, in theory, that that is something that, I don't think this money is specifically for that. You know, now the person who's teaching the drone class obviously can implement that, and like I say, that to me, you know, we have our, we're directors back here, that's one of the most important things that any teacher can do, is to not only give information, but equip kids to get information and be able to receive and decipher information on their own.
Mr. Curvin, my response.
I hear how it's folded into the curriculum of many different teachers and so on.
Right.
I just was thinking, specifically, a course that is dedicated to that only, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be a good thing for the legislature, you know, when they're deciding in their appropriations how much money they're gonna give us, to specifically address something like that.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, in my experience as a child, not as a parent, but as a child, I mean, I learned how to study at home because I was denied every other right and privilege as a child until I studied. So I think there's a certain cross barrier that parents need to step up and say, you're not playing until you do X, Y, and Z.
I hear that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of things, real quick. I know that for the last several years, and I've had kids that have done it, and they're gonna do it again this summer, and that's the STEM program that Emery Riddle does, and I think a couple of years ago, they actually did drones for that week or whatever they were there. They've done robotics, they've done different things, and I don't know the current status because my kid's not in that grade anymore, but they did have an avid program at the school, which was a class about learning how to study. So they've already been addressing that as an institution.
Yeah, we are looking at different opportunities for kids, you know, I mean, kids are so varied now, and there's a big technical push, and looking for different ways for kids to complete their high school and graduate, and have a viable, marketable skill when they get out of school. And, you know, not everybody's gonna go to college, you know, we need to have something for our kids to stay here and be successful, and be able to do what they need to do, and be productive citizens, and maybe grow up and be on the Board of County Commissioners one day.
Good.
For the school board, yeah.
Any more discussion? Good luck with the legislature.
Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, that pass unanimous.
Thank you for continued support.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda. Next will be public comments. Public comment.
I asked Frank.
Hold on. Is it doing public comments?
This is public.
Oh, okay.
I'll just let you know, I asked him to come down and talk about the recycles.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Come on.
Morning, commissioners. Yeah.
Let me get your name, but a record, please, sir.
My name is Franklin Lashallow, and I work with Greif Recycling, and I'm a senior account manager with the company, and I've been in recycling for thirty-seven years, and I've been buying from Franklin County ever since they've started, ever since you started recycling. And Fonda asked me to come down and tell you, give kind of the state of the recycling. And right now, the recycling market has been depressed for the last six months because of China has been the number-one consumer of recyclables throughout the world, and the U.S. was basically the number-one supplier into China for plastics, paper, aluminum cans. And back in two thousand seventeen, they enacted what is called the National Sword, and they, which, they wanted to reduce the amount of contamination coming into their country. They still needed the paper and the recyclables, but the contamination level was so high, they said, we can't take it anymore, and so they've been reducing the amount they take in ever since two thousand seventeen. So this leaves us with a tremendous oversupply in our country, and what we're trying to do is trying to create more markets internally to take more material, but this has caused this oversupply, which also caused the prices to decline. And a lot of municipalities are faced with, what do we do with recycling? Do we continue? And my answer to that is yes, continue recycling, even though the prices are depressed, it will come back. And we definitely need to address the contaminant, contaminations that the public drop off to the drop-off centers. My recommendations, if you don't have a manned drop-off center, to maybe look at bringing or having the consumer, or the public deliver materials to a recycling center, or to the county recycling center. This way, you can man it, you can see the contamination level coming in. If you're dropping off material at a drop-off site without a manned site, you're gonna be more liable to take in more contaminants, and that's basically what I was here today to talk about. If, you know, anybody has any questions.
By how long you, well, I know this is a hard question, but how long you think it'll be before it give back?
The markets, yeah. Right now, you know, in the thirty-seven years I've been doing this, we're probably in the largest oversupply of paper in this country that I've seen in a while, so it's gonna take months to turn this ship around. It's not easy, and so domestic mills are doing a lot of changes, they're putting a lot of equipment in at paper mills to take on this extra, you know, additional contamination and levels, and so they're changing things, the way they do at mills. I would say it's gonna be at least a year or two for things to get back to normal. And what's happening now, China's making a push into buying paper mills in the United States, and doing the collection here in the United States, and creating pulp, what they make paper, what they make paper off, and bringing that pulp from the United States into their country, so it comes in clean. And that's what they're doing, that transformation is taking place right now. China's made a purchase of four different paper mills here in the U.S., so they're looking to do that, and that's gonna help offset some of that supply.
But the thing about it, you know, with a big county, they'll have somebody that understand God, but you know, we as a small county, we don't have the money to have a man just to sit there and watch a container, and see what they put in, and so that gonna hurt all the smaller counties.
Right, and it's a difficult, yeah, it's difficult for smaller counties. That's why, you know, you may want to see about maybe doing away with the drop-off sites, the unmanned sites, and bringing, you know, having the residents bring the material into the recycling center. This way, it's manned, and you already have folks there, you're not paying any additional salaries. You know, that may be something to consider. I see some facilities, some smaller counties do that now, and then some other smaller counties like Madison, they have manned sites. In fact, I think they have about thirteen manned sites.
Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion here a couple of months ago with regard to the abuse of the recycling center containers, and yes, you used the word contaminant, I think, and many different products are contaminating that, and it, I think the system itself, the actual unit, everything was abused, and I believe it was several thousand dollars a potential cost to the county as a result of all of that. So I understand we have decommissioned those areas now, and yet there is a huge debris thrown into the woods and all those kinds of things that are still happening in that area. I had two questions, and one is, do you, I just know, as long as our county is asking people to take it to a manned collection center, maybe impractical for many people. It's effort and so on, and I think you've already said, you don't know of any other alternative that we could do to get a collection cycle center spotted throughout our county, more convenient for people to try to recycle again, signage, lights, cameras, that type of thing.
Yeah, you could add, Commissioner.
Have you seen it's successful?
I haven't seen that, you know, you can also, maybe if you didn't want, have manned sites all the time, you can designate certain days for a drop-off.
There, maybe a mobile unit that arrives at a certain time. I think we talked about that potentially, maybe that would be.
Yes, sir.
Have you seen that?
I've seen other counties do that, yes.
Successful?
Yes, and this would be for not just your, you know, everyday recyclable, like aluminum cans or paper and so forth, but they also do for electronics.
Yes.
So you could do.
Adds more benefit, and paints, and lights, and all that, yes. Good point. And then the other part of the question is, do you know if the products that China is buying from the United States, is it tariff-free for those particular products, have you heard?
Yeah, there is some that is tariff-free, and right, and this, you know, a lot of people say, oh, has this started with the tariffs? And no, this started a couple of years ago, even prior to the tariffs. You know, they had, China had an environmental problem in their country, didn't have the, their oversight, you know, of the recyclables and what they do with the contaminants, and so they didn't have anything in place, really. And so they're getting stricter, you know, pressure from the world to clean up their country from the smog. They shut down these small inefficient paper mills, they created a lot of smog, and that's going away, or they're cleaning up their river streams, because a lot of the plastic wind up in streams and floated out into the ocean, and now you have islands that are, you know, have multiple, you know, just contaminated with plastic and other, you know, items. So they made a push to clean their country up, and they took the stance that, you know, they're gonna bring it down from, I think the outthrows were allowable, the contaminants that they allowed prior to this in two thousand seventeen was five to ten percent, and they reduced that to half a percent.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really to a level where it's unattainable to even ship material there. Nobody wants to take a risk of shipping it there because the, you know, result would be bad.
But China's not paying a tariff to us to take that newspaper when they want it.
No, not that I know. But that may change now, when they do, when they do the paper mills here, when they complete these paper mills and they sell that finished product.
Yeah.
Okay, we appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Howard Neighbors, the Department Director, report.
Good morning, Commissioner, how y'all doing? I got a couple items. We continue on cutting grass throughout the county, which, you know, still shoulder inmates, which we've talked about last two weeks, but we're doing the best we can. We in East Point Island this morning, so cutting, and then we go on for bears and caribou, then back in Appalachia, so. I know a lot of places have grown up, a lot of people's calling and complaining, but I know that we will get it, so. And I know we talked about the motor grader and stuff also at the last meeting, they're gonna bring a demonstrator down for us to try out. When we get some rain, it's just too dry out there to try to grade, so. Soon as they bring that demonstrator down, we try it out, and then I can get back with the board on that.
They told me at the prison yesterday, it'll probably be six to eight months before we get our DC squads back.
Yeah, yeah, they took them all, I mean.
They took every one of them, yours, mine, said it'll probably be eight months before we get them back.
If.
If we get them back.
If, that's what he said, so.
What's the problem? They short-handed.
They show, real short-handed, so.
So why didn't we just sign that contract?
We still gonna get inmate, but you, I mean, you ain't gonna get your state crews as of right now, and some of your crews, well, we usually get four, you get two, sometimes get one per truck, so.
Yeah, I've been getting one for the last few days, and then they got back up to two, then.
Yeah, then what we do then, that, I mean, we take one inmate, well, we take two of our inmate crews and then put them together, instead of driving two trucks, you just drive one, so.
Yeah, 'cause Bobby didn't get one for two days in a row out there.
Well, let me ask you some, Mr. Howard, is we, Michael, I guess this is a question for you two, is we set up for county inmate, just like the state inmate, to get them?
I don't know if you could get them, them being, kind of being local, I'm not so sure about it.
I can share it.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, just in case we come, it hits real so, Mike, how about checking with the sheriff department and see? Can we do, I don't know whether we can do it, or?
We had never done it since I've been with the county, but I'm not so sure, Mike, can't answer that question, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Also, Mike, I'd like to make a motion that we write, yes, and let them know the detrimental effects we have here of not having the state inmates in the middle of grass cutting season, trying to keep your right-of-ways cleaning, and just let them know that we understand where they're at, but we want them to understand exactly where we're at, too, because it's detrimental that we get this inmate crews out to get these grass and the ditches cleaned and everything else, so it's very detrimental for small rural county and how that's affecting us, and I'd like to put that in form of a motion, to have staff write a letter to them.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, seconded by Commissioner John.
Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Curting on what Mr. Wrong was saying, unless I'm wrong, I thought we signed the MOU with the state. The MOU wasn't just to allow us to do something, the MOU was them stating that they were going to do something.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to make sure that that verbiage is included in this letter.
Yes, sir, we signed a thing like we did Ricky to get them, but they so short-handed right now.
They shouldn't have signed, sent us one to sign then.
Yeah, Mr. Seb, this has happened a couple of times.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that verbiage needs to be included.
I think you had some leave, retired, and they had some, I think, left, went to the jail, and some transferred to different prisons, and they just so short-handed, so.
Oh, this is, this is short-handed relative to supervisory staff. They have plenty of incarcerated individuals.
Oh, yeah.
You have to train people there to do it, understand it.
Yeah, yeah. And, well, we do with that.
No, but that's you.
Mr. Parrish, do you amend your second, or your motion to include the comments of Commissioner James?
I amend the motion.
Amend the second, Commissioner James.
Yep.
First and the second been amended. Y'all ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, all opposed, that pass unanimous.
Then also on our signs and stuff throughout the county, we've got eighty percent of our sign, maybe ninety, that's been changed out from the storm damage, but we also have a lot of signs that just faded completely, and we're gonna go back through the county and also change them out.
Yeah.
But we got to order some more signs and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I know, I think I've supplied you with a list before, but I'll get you a list for my district, so you make it easy, you know what I mean? You want to go looking for what's faded off, I'll let you know, so you'll have.
They faded, or was that wind damage?
Some faded, some's gone.
I meant, was that, was that the wind damage from the storm?
Yeah, that was a storm, from twisted posts, and bend your signs up, some of the signs pulled completely gone, so.
Yeah, okay.
And also, another sign, I think, the guy called yesterday from St. George Island in a plantation, which he was wanting a sign put up end of county property, as you go into the plantation, I don't know if, how that would work.
I don't know who calls you, but I've been in discussions with someone else about that.
He said he was gonna get up with you on that.
Yeah, there's an ongoing issue as to where to put that sign and to create a four-way stop or not. The problem is, people that comes to enter the road before they get into the plantation, the plantation wants to sign up there, basically making people stop, but they don't want a sign to stop the plantation owners on their way out, so that's creating a controversy, and I gotta, I've been trying to work through with them on that deal. If I could move on to another subject, tell, the cost of that, I know you repainted the crosswalks over on St. George Island, but you were telling me earlier, there's a piece of equipment that can actually do a better job. Would you explain to the board what it is, how much it costs?
It's probably, it's between seven and eight thousand, and it's the stuff where you put the, like, stop on it, and you heat it, and when you heat it, it melts into your pavement, which it lasts a lot longer than the other stuff, you use that paint, which you put your markers on there, then you paint over, then two days, three days later after traffic goes over, it just kinda, kinda blackens out.
It's almost like a thorough plaster, where you melt it on the asphalt, opposed to painting. The painting doesn't last very long.
Yeah, but the other stuff that you do, it lasts probably three or four years, or maybe even longer.
What, you need one?
And it looks better, Commissioner.
You got the money in your budget to get one?
Yeah, we got it.
Well, I'll make a motion for you to get one, sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Yeah, discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, stuff like that, and it's gonna benefit, always bring it full so we can get it done, because you'll save money.
That's right.
Doing it every three years and going back every three months.
Right, and it's a lot quicker, I mean, you gotta set it two, two hours, two and a half hours for that paint to dry, when you put that heat stuff on it, and all within twenty minutes, thirty minutes, you gone, I mean, doesn't take.
You good to go for three years?
Yes.
See if they'll take your old unit in for a trade-in, or?
We, we got no, you know.
It's a paint brush.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a paint brush.
And I don't want to come across, Commissioner, that the people on St. George Island were not grateful for what Howard did, they are, because, you know, Memorial Day is upon us, and here comes the tourists, but, you know, we, I think if we can do better, we can afford to do better, let's do better.
Y'all ready to vote? All in favor, all opposed, that pass unanimous.
And some of the, oh, just about all the residential alligator points, happy on the eleven hundred foot being paved, and about a firehouse I looked, it did, it looked good. I took pictures and sent to Michael yesterday, so, oh, it looked good, and maybe.
Very much so, we appreciate that.
I know they called three or four times, it was about them lights not working properly, so we don't have to worry about that no more for a while.
They don't need the lights, none of them.
No, sir, none, lights is gone, so.
Okay, that's a cause, we ain't got the paper.
Yes, sir. On that same, so Clay Kennedy is down at the alligator point right now, meeting with the four legislators, and they called to say, you know, there's some asphalt down here, we didn't see this asphalt last time we here, where this coughs, so he's, I gave him the tattoo explaining to them why the asphalt is, it's temporary, it's wrong, it's in, it's not gonna be where it's gonna be forever, so anyway, hopefully none of us go to jail.
Maybe we get a couple years out of it, anyway, I hope.
Well, I hope, I hope we get a couple months and we start building a new road.
Yeah, well, that would be a lot better, but.
Well, that can be, might be able to use that as a base.
Well, it will be used as a construction platform, absolutely, yeah, yeah, has a value.
That's all I got this morning.
Anybody else got anything for him? Mr. Neighbors, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Howard.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Juanadez, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I had a couple items on here on my report this morning, one that's require action. Last meeting, it was brought up about the dune walkovers, so I met with DEP on site about the walkovers concerns, I was reminded by DEP that we are in turtle nesting season, and there shall be no major construction or equipment allowed on the beach. The recommendation was made that we repair the existing concerns by raising the slope portion of the dune walkover, so that they are leveled with the entire walkover, and at the end, put steps. Now, what this gonna do, it's gonna take away from any wheelchairs, or the handicap part of it.
Well, we ain't got no other choice because DEP said we got to do it, right?
Yes.
That's what they recommended.
Right, at this time, during turtle nesting season, we cannot extend it where the slope would be adequate, so what we need to do now to fix the problem and keep everybody happy and safe, is raise the slope where it'll be level completely, and put steps on the end.
Right, y'all need to do that, I guess, how long is, how long is turtle season?
Six months.
Six months.
How much more time we got in it?
It just started.
It just started.
November thirty.
It'll be a while.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Monday.
Find, I think, you know, we pretty much got our directions and what we need to do, but I think we need signage at the beginning out there next to where you get on the dune walkovers, if there is no handicap accessibility.
Okay.
Due to turtle nesting season, so for people to get on the boardwalk and walk to the end and fall off the end of it, because they don't have handicap accessibility, we need to put some kind of signage there before they ever enter the boardwalk that, due to turtle nesting season, you know, there is no handicap accessibility at the end of it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board also to consider adding to that signage a directive to the people, telling them where the handicap access is, because we do have some limited handicap access, I believe, at the main parking lot, do we not, where the White House is?
No, sir.
There's no handicap access there?
Because all the dune system and all beaches are roamed away, it's like a five-foot truck, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's a couple of street ends that don't have dune walkovers, and those are handicapped accessible, you have to walk through the sand, but at least you're, you're on grade. I think it's Sixth Street West or East has got one, I know, that I went and looked at.
But if they're handicapped, they're not gonna be able to get through the sand either. I mean, you have a wheelchair, and you can't hardly walk, you're not gonna be able to stroke through that sand.
I know, Commissioner, when you get to the end of the boardwalk, you're gonna be in sand, we're just putting you in sand sooner. I'm not trying to make light of the situation, but, you know, the boardwalk is about to end well before you get to the water, and so if you're handicapped and can't get in any sand, I don't have a solution for you.
Well, let me ask you a crazy question, what would be the outcome of getting some temporary? Well, let me ask you a crazy question, what, what'll be the outcome of getting some temporary sand and put back?
Uh, that was, that's not feasible, I don't think, Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman, because, uh, one, the winds gonna blow it all around, uh,
The wind, wind.
Uh, and two, you need beach compatible sand, you don't have to get it, you don't have to buy it from someplace and truck it in, I'm not.
Or you can't get no truck down there, because they don't want no equipment on the beach, so it's kind of stuck, that's what you can do.
Turtle season's gonna limit that?
Yeah.
One other option, I mean, it's probably, it's expensive, we could look into mats. They, they have mats that you lay down, and you can roll across the sand, but years ago, they were expensive.
Yeah, they actually have some of those in the state park on the island. Some, some places that have those mats, so, I mean, that, that's something that we could look and see what it looks like, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I'm sure Josh would mind us looking to see what they look like, so we can do research and find out what we can do.
If we just give them, I mean, we, we might not have the money to make it mats accessible to everyone.
Right.
Dune walkover, if we give them access to some one or two, will that be efficient?
Yeah, I think that's what Mr. Shuler was saying.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's what, uh, uh, Mr. Davis is going to look at, is, is to provide a single handicap access on a temporary basis during turtle season, and then once we can get into the dune system and do the necessary repairs, and then the, uh, handicap access will be corrected after turtle season concludes. People, people wanna look at doing some temporary access right now and report back to the board, is what I'm hearing.
Okay, well, you need a motion on it?
So, my.
Sir, second.
Okay, I got a motion on flow by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Jones, I meant, uh, Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
The next item is, uh, just for your information, uh, I'll be on vacation June first to the fifth, with no phone service, if y'all need.
Got all of them.
No phone service?
No phone service.
I didn't see that before.
Somebody's gonna be on a boat.
That's right.
Fonda?
Yeah, yes, sir.
They want us to, um, do the All-Stars, sponsored All-Stars, you know, for the little fellers this year in Franklin County?
Okay.
How does that gonna work with our little fellers, you know, the ba- uh, baseball?
Which, when you say sponsors?
Uh, they want to do it at, here in Franklin County?
You mean tournament?
Tournaments and all.
Yes, we, we just carry on normal, I mean, we beat up parking wreck department, we beat up the system, and then we kind of wait to need it, we got the fields ready. Uh, being that you said that, I did have a, a, a text from a, a gentleman there wanting to hold a tournament over in Carribeville. I think it's the first or the, the eighth of June.
Third today, or the eighth of the?
Let me, let me double check, Commissioner, give me.
Them, them little fellers are good, it's playing that baseball, softball, whatever it is. I've been going to their games there, they got a little team from over here, Ronnie coaches, they good.
Uh, Walkover, uh, with three teams that wanna use the Carribeville field, there's All-Star teams that play three, uh, June first or the eighth. So, it just, whichever day, make sure it don't conflict with our parking wreck league. So, we normally allow that, we just have them sign a waiver.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
Ronnie's team's gonna be playing too?
Sir.
Ronnie's team will be playing in the one from Walkover?
Uh, yes, I think Ronnie's team, that child plays local.
Yeah, they, they play this one, their little team, they, they good, they going all over traveling, playing.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I got something for Fonda, please.
Go ahead.
Fonda, the, we've discussed about finishing the docks where the, the crabbers are at in, uh, in East Point?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Indian Creek. The particular problem we ran up against is, and yes, they've been paying into that fund, but the, the docks are so depleted there, that I didn't even know they weren't there, that's how depleted they were, when I became Commissioner. We're up to the point now where there's not enough money in it to finish what needs to be put back. So I've talked with finance, we also need to do, to have the, the pier by the pavilion refixed from the storm.
Right, that's right.
So I'd like to see us, uh, using monies we've had from insurance claims in my district. We're going to, I'd like to put them all out, the, the three finger piers and the pier at the pavilion.
Right.
To be fixed, and try to do them all in one bid, so maybe it'd be, give us a more advantageous price, and we'd also get them all done at the same time.
Okay.
But I, I would like to see that taken out to bid, I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
I got a motion on flow by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Paris. Any more discussion on that? Or what? How the parks is all over the county? I know, you talking about that, but what about the rest of them all over the county?
They, they coming around, it's, uh, only biggest problem we have right now is that this, the fishing pier here on the East Point side, that's, that's about the biggest.
And we're still waiting on FEMA for that.
That's, that's correct, yeah, so, but, uh, all the other parts are minor, uh, here in Appalachia, PW Wilson, the, the backstops, the overhang, it's the fencing company that we've been dealing with out of Bluntstown, it's, it's, I don't for whatever reason, we can't get them to come around, that's what I was sharing with Pam, and she also recommended that we, we, uh, maybe try to find another fencing company, so I would do that this afternoon. Uh, East Point, uh, it's coming, it's good, looking good, we actually repaired some parts on the playground, and, and Kendrick Park, it's, it's, it's looking good. So, all the parts is doing good.
Well, I know I don't have to tell you, but keep, make sure you keep an eye on them, so they, till they get repaired back all the way, so nobody gets hurt.
Okay.
I, I know y'all do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Relative to island view and restoration of that, do, can we get an update on where we are with FEMA?
The other on that is that I met on the site visit with FEMA, um, two weeks ago, and everybody, including the previous design, uh, con- the contractor, or I should say, the contractor, the design engineer, FEMA, myself, we all agree that some of those parts of the park need to re, be, be changed in their design, and, and so mitigate it against future damage, and so we're waiting for FEMA, I, I'm not quite sure what step, and, and I, I don't think Pam knows anymore than I do on this one, is that, it's one thing to repair a park back to, to, to its original pre-storm condition, you know, you, you gotta, you, you do the analysis, get estimates, and put it back. When you do mitigation, which we wanna do, we wanna mitigate all that concrete work, put, put pile-supported piers in there, get rid of all that concrete, put brick, get rid of all the brick pavers, put asphalt down there, uh, change the landscaping, then, then you're into mitigation, it's a little more complicated, and I, we're waiting for some guidance from FEMA on exactly what they'll agree, agree to mitigate on that. But I met out there on site, uh, we all were headed in the right direction, but I don't have a timeline, I'll be honest with you.
Well, look, you know, we was told one time that they be saying FEMA, but FEMA said they be sending money to the state, and they be banking the money, so is this, what the case on this?
Well, once, and I'll defer to Pam to correct me on this one, once you have a PWN it's signed, and then the FEMA does send the money to the state, because the state's the one that really reimburses it, right, I mean, we get, we get.
So who is the real holder?
Well.
We don't have the PW on this one, now, you just got a check for Aaron, how much is that check for? You got reimbursement for your debris that we picked up, and you got reimbursement on, uh, ten?
One hundred sixty-one thousand, five twenty-one seventy-four.
Is that overtime?
No. That's your debris?
A lot of difference in the debris, okay.
That's the debris that the county pu- put the money out for, the debris and the, the monitoring, and then you've got a road included in that, too.
Well, look, excuse me, um, since that thing been reclassified, are they gonna send us some more on that?
You actually, on this one, you got a hundred percent, which is what you knew you was gonna get, on your debris, and you got ninety percent, and five percent from the state, on, I think it's ten mile and eight mile gallon?
I think we was asking, and I, we have, I have got written writing, uh, confirmed this, but the, the, but I saw news reports, the president did sign a declaration.
Ninety-ten.
Going to ninety-ten, so theoretically, and I say theoretically, because I haven't seen any other, any other confirmation, is that with a ninety-ten split, ninety percent's paid by the Fed, five percent by the state, and five percent by the local, that, and that should apply to everything.
Yes.
So you know that gonna help us a lot?
Oh, it'll help you a lot, cut you twelve and a half percent, match down to five percent, so, yeah, and then it's possible the governor can do another, away from that, we, we, I haven't sent the waiver on behalf of the county, because I was waiting for some of this other stuff to get sort of resolved.
And not, not only us, all the small counties.
Oh, yeah, it'll find everybody, yeah.
But, yes, Commissioner, I asked you a question, once it's obligated by the federal government, they send the money to the state. Now, it's taking the state, they're a lot quicker, because, uh, the governor was at the governor's conference, and, um, they are pushing money out as, as fast as, uh, they can, in fact, he cut out a step, he said he really didn't see why the state was reviewing what the federal government had already agreed to, so they're sending money out as quick as they can, but it's taken about a month, uh, before you get it. Uh, the problem is, um,
It's taking.
Doing, doing the project worksheets, doing all the EEIs to get the money obligated, all the information that we have to have in order to get it done. I mean, we're working as hard as we can, but, you know, uh, like he said, we've got, um, Donna Wilson, we've got everything we need except the backstops. Getting those up, and getting that price, and getting that invoice in, that'll come be a completed project, should, which should go through pretty quick.
Well, see, I guess my thing is, the reason I'm asking about it, because if they be them paid before our budget, then we have no way we staying, but if not.
Well, even if you want to pay, as long as the PW is obligated, you, you, you're, you're, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, a hundred percent, you should be a hundred percent confident, PW is obligated, you're gonna get the money.
I know, but.
The challenge is getting those things written up, uh, in the next two or three months.
You have my money in the bank, Beth?
Our money's in the, yes, sir. I, I will say, let me, let me give you the worst-case scenario for Island View, since there's mitigation involved, we're trying to change it, and this is, this is an analogy that I hate to use, but I'm gonna use it anyway, you might look at Alligator, but you might look at Island View, similar to Alligator Point, if there's mitigation involved, it could be a long time.
I see, okay, okay, good point. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure, that money, that check you're holding on to, Aaron, is, that was relative to Michael, correct? And I know we've talked about the need to reach back to Hermine, that, that's still other pending monies coming in?
There's not that much of her, I don't know, maybe.
That's all Alligator Point does.
Yeah, Hermine, well, the Hermine money's not, we're not gonna get Hermine, I, there was two point six million dollars dedicated to Alligator Point, uh, for Hermine, that money's been rolled over into Michael, so there's, as far as I know, there's no Hermine money really, well, there's a little bit for, for Gulfstream Boulevard. We got a little bit for Gulfstream Boulevard for Hermine, and that's gonna go back to, to the Ballpoint Trust Fund, but it's basically Hermine is done, I mean, all the expenses we have now are coming from Michael.
And that check, will that go back into the general reserve fund?
It will, it will, it'll actually offset the expenses that we've incurred so far.
Yes, so, we knew sometime in February, we had used about five hundred thousand of the general reserve, a million, are we still in general reserve about how much we have left now, before we put this check in?
Gosh, as far as, um, I mean, really, it's been about the same, because that was the worst-case scenario that I gave you.
Yes, okay, good.
For the burden of general fund.
Good.
Yeah, your burden on general fund comes when you have overtime, that wasn't, that wasn't approved, and we've more stopped all that.
Yeah, and most of that, too, will come back to the process by FEMA.
All right.
Well, let, let me give you the worst case scenario, so, so if FEMA has ten million dol- if we have ten million dollars of the projects in the county for, for capital expenses, for repair damage, five percent of ten million dollars is, is five hundred thousand dollars, so we still have, you know, we still have some matching responsibilities, so I don't wanna pretend like it's all gonna be cleared, because even if five percent of ten million is five hundred thousand.
Yeah. Okay, y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
That's it for me.
That's it, anybody, anything else for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Have a good vacation.
Thanks.
Keep performing.
I wish.
Next on the agenda, be Ms. Pam Banea, emergency manager.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, apologize for not having a report, we were at the governor's conference in class. Uh, looks like season has started early, early, we now have Andrea, she's predicted to turn back out, thank goodness, but, you know, we had one while we were down there that sort of fizzled out, so. Uh, predictions are, we're looking at pretty much what, at what we had last year, and again, there's antipatias this week into the weekend, at, you know, in the hundred, so, it's warming up quick, um.
I hope it don't be what it was.
Well, me too, Commissioners. Um, on another note, uh, we have contacted, we have the same problem with DSA about, uh, getting sandbags filled. They don't have supervisors, so as it sits right now, uh, we have very few sandbags filled. Uh, we have lots of bags, but nobody to fill them, so other counties basically put the dirt out there and shovels, and let people fill their own. Until we get some relief from DSA, we won't have any pre-fill sandbags, when what we have in our storage lockers is gone, it's gone.
What about them people working on that program?
Sir?
I think we got a.
Workforce program?
Can they fill it back?
Yes, I sure can, Mr. Noah.
What else, I was gonna recommend, your earlier motion about sending the sheriff, uh, a letter for inmates, let's see if his, the county inmates could, uh, help with that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Fonda's got a van full, can help, too.
Okay, I, as far as workforce, I don't, I don't know how many men they have on there, but when you fill that sandbag, that's about forty-five pounds.
There's five, four, five of them on that van.
Okay, all right, so you want me to contact Fonda?
Yeah, contact, they can help.
Okay, that works for me.
They can, they can fill it up and leave it there for the men to fill it.
If you can't get them all filled, contact, we'll get them filled.
Okay, all right, but, uh, we've got them, we went and looked at each location to see how many bags we had there before we ordered anymore, and I think we got plenty, it's just getting them filled, and getting them in our storage lockers, you know, those big containers we bought last year are to put those sandbags in, so they don't get wet that way.
I'll talk to the warden here, get us some help.
Okay, all right.
That's it?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, Pam, has, and you might, there might not be an answer yet, but that's fine, has there been a discussion between you and Tim Center's group about some RVs for your office? I've had discussion with them, I just don't know if they've talked to you yet.
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, I'll touch back to that.
Only discussion I've had with them is, they wanted to take fire funds to clean them trailers back up for them to give to another county, and I told them they couldn't use those funds, they had, those are their trailers.
I understand. No, the reason, what I was saying is, I've talked to them about the possibility of the county somehow securing at least a couple of those to help your EOC in the event that you have to.
Leave.
Be under emergency or leave, so I, I believe what we have is kind of aging, so it might be a good win-win situation for both groups.
Um, yeah, I haven't had any discussion with them.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm saying thank you, I was going.
I, there's a lot of people that, that leave off, and I'm better than trying to find a motel room.
We'd be responsible, though, okay.
Well, they've already got one, Commissioner.
It's, um, it's a, it's a mobile command unit that, um, forestry donated to, or however you wanna call it, it's still their trailer, we just, uh, went in and retrofitted it to be able to put our radios and things in it, and that is for, if we have to implement our coop plant, or if you say, God forbid, had another fire somewhere, you can actually take that unit and set up and run out of it.
Yeah, it's good to be mobile, but it ain't good.
I'd like to clarify what I was saying, because that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Command units.
Had we, had we evacuated Derek Michael and took our mobile command unit to where we had planned on taking it in Liberty County, we'd have been in trouble, so you're absolutely right.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was talking about, if you're going back away.
You just gotta make sure, and we're gonna start looking to the east and the west.
It's a good thing to have, they're gonna go, I guess you have to send it up there two, three days ahead, if, if it happened, it happened, if it don't, you, you would go back.
Yeah, bring it back, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Pam, this is just a theory question, let's just forecast we have another hurricane like we had in Michael, and post, post-storm, um, is it appropriate to make our EOC visible to the people, to have a plan to put, say, dotted across the county post-storm, a awning-type freestanding structure, Franklin County EOC, and, you know-
Franklin County E O C, and, you know, we, we're here to help you type. Where, where, where there's a presence of our E O C in every district post-storm, that's, that the people just see that we're visible, that we're there, uh, with directions and water and sandbags and all those kinds of things. Is that, is that, or maybe we're doing something like that? I heard there was a lack of a lot of our county visibility post-Michael, and I'm wondering if there's any potential, and, and that would facilitate your goal and role.
Commissioner, when, when, we've got an approaching storm, we're in the E O C, we're activated, we're on conference calls. And Chairman said through Michael, he can tell you. Uh, unless you've got volunteers that you can put out there and do those things for you, no, sir. Our job is to be in that E O C, activated, uh, helping this commission, uh, make the right decisions.
Okay. Yeah, remember, there, there's three, they have staffed three people there. And what you're talking about, if you're trying to staff, uh, you know, basically D R C, that's recovery center in every district, you're gonna need fifteen people. You have three, and they, yes, and they're, they're, they're on call twenty-four hours a day, so those three are really occupied trying to man, manage the E O C during disaster. But, but FEMA does, and the, the D R C is the terminology that they create, and I think we have two or three in the county, you'll never get one in every district. I mean, FEMA's gonna operate off of population centers and damage centers, and so in the case of Michael, there was a D R C in Carabelle for a while, as I recall. And there might have been one at Alligator Point briefly, but they, but they, but they staffed those and ramped them up with the personnel based upon their evaluation of damage over very, very large areas, but you're never gonna get five of those things set in the county, which isn't the manpower for that.
Pam get plenty of time for the sandbags, she had a couple of days for the storm, got there and told them where they was at.
We, we, we run on volunteers.
Yeah.
And, and again, we use our cert team. Um, unfortunately, our cert team's mostly the older generation, and basically they're there to, you know, uh, here's the sandbags, try to help them lift them if they can, but, uh, again, when you look at volunteers, that's iffy. They may show up, they may not, but that's what we run off of, even during a storm, we run off of volunteers, our COO is a volunteer.
I see, okay.
Okay. And, and the name?
No, sir, we're just, uh, working on FEMA paperwork.
Okay. That's it for you?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, anybody else got anything for Mr.? Ms. Banera, okay, keep up the good work. I take five.